Good evening. We call this meeting a Fairfield County Council to order. It's Monday, October 8th at 6:00 P.M. First item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Been made and properly seconded, the agenda be approved as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, the agenda is approved as presented. invocation, Councilmember Trapp, please.
Let us pray. God, please be with us as we conduct the county's business. Please let every vote taken here today be in the best interest of the citizens of Fairfield County. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Next is the approval of minutes. We have two tonight, the work session on September 20, 2018, and our regular meeting from September 24. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly seconded that those minutes be approved as presented. We have any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
None.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, those minutes are approved. We have no public presentations tonight. We're down to the first public comment session. Mrs. Davis?
We have ten who wish to speak tonight, all concerning Mount Zion. First, we have Ms. Claudia Cathcart.
Good evening, council members, and Mr. Taylor. Good evening, council members, and Mr. Taylor, Administrator. My name is Claudia Carter Cathcart, and I was born and have grown up here in Winsboro. I love Winsboro, and I love Fairfield County. I would like to thank you, all of you, for your due diligence on the administrative office project. After reading the chart that you put together of the construction beds, I cannot understand how anyone cannot say that the Mount Zion building would be the most economical and the best choice. It's in the center of the county seat, near the courthouse, and available to all areas of the county. And because of the tax credits, it'll give the county more bang for their buck, you might say. It will bring more businesses to downtown, and it'll help with the revitalization. We've had some bad luck lately in this county, and now it's our chance to overcome some of these negative thoughts. It's time to make our county and town thrive again. Please vote yes for this project. Let us be Fairfield strong. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Joan Comby.
Council members, I urge you to vote for the proposal to rehabilitate the Mount Zion property for county offices. This is the least expensive and most energy-efficient option. It addresses the issue of the need for additional space and temporary housing while the courthouse is being renovated. It is the only option that will not require a tax increase to do needed repair work. The claim that all the neighbors are opposed is not true. I live in the neighborhood, and no one ever asked my opinion. I know I am not alone amongst my neighbors in support of the project. One option suggested is to tear down the building. A vacant lot so close to the main street will not remain vacant forever. I have already heard one plan for what someone would like to see happen to the lot, and it is something I would definitely oppose. I urge you to accept the good deal proposed by First and Main and not leave us open to the uncertainty of the next idea.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Susan Taylor.
I was born at Fairfield Memorial Hospital in 1960. You can do the math. I've lived in Winsboro, in Fairfield County, my entire life, and I've always worked here. I attended public schools in Fairfield County. I'm proud to say that. Mount Zion for seven of those years. There are varying public opinions of what should be done with Mount Zion. I am sympathetic to all these opinions, but I believe we have an opportunity before us that is rare. We are fortunate that First and Main Development has an interest in the buildings. Mr. Taylor and his staff have done their due diligence and have identified a viable option for relocating our county offices to Mount Zion. This is a plan that our county can afford. It's the only plan that our county can afford that's on the table right now. And third, we have an opportunity to rehab a building of historical value. I believe that the refurbishment of these buildings would bring property values up. I believe it would bring stability to an otherwise undetermined fate that could be far more negative. So I'm very much in favor of repurposing Mount Zion for our county offices. Like many others, I'm passionate about saving historical landmarks. I would ask that we all consider the value of such buildings and advocate to protect them and find purpose for them. I'm grateful for our leadership, Mr. Taylor, his administration, Mr. Smith, council, council men and women. And I appreciate the inroads that you've made with our town council. I believe that you have no other agenda than to move our county forward, and I appreciate that. I applaud you for your vision and your commitment. I love Winsboro, and I love Fairfield County, and that means I love our people, all of you. And I thank you for hearing my petition to save these buildings and rehabilitate them for a use that I believe would be beneficial to all the citizens of the county. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Pat Curly.
Good evening.
After hearing all the discussions and facts on the dilemma of how to best solve and repairing this current administration building, and the cost of temporary housing of employees during repairs, and the fact that the county can't get a loan to repair or build in any other way, I'm convinced that the preserving of a piece of our history, in this case, is the means to having the money to solve this problem. Mount Zion provides the added benefit of more space for growth and consolidation of services, plus space for the public to enjoy. I'm glad that Mount Zion is still standing to be considered as a solution. And thank you, council, for your diligence of working and comparing costs and options. I urge you to vote yes to move the county administration offices to Mount Zion and give this a chance to go forward today. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Yvette Howard.
Good evening, county council, and county council and county employees. I'm Yvette Howard, a resident of District Seven. I'm here this evening to speak on the cost of Mount Zion, the project that you have under consideration about putting the new county administration complex in that area, and the quality of life of the citizens of Fairfield County. You keep telling us that there is a limit on the amount of money that the county will spend on the Mount Zion project, and at the same time saying that if there is an overrun or if the proposal needs additional funds, that is, that the cost that's projected is exceeded, the county council can meet and decide to spend more money, and that's the only way that they can do it. Well, to me, that means that we still do not have a limit on the spending. I urge you to consider other things that are needed in this county. We are told that tax credits will be used to fund this project. Well, I'm asking you to use tax credits, tax money, grants or whatever to improve the quality of life of the people who are living here. Economic development seemed to be a big concern of everybody. Well, what about the residents who are here already? Yes, residential areas need infrastructure. Plants and other industries that are considering moving here are saying that we need to improve our infrastructure. I live in a neighborhood where the road conditions are terrible, and whenever I call to see what can be done about it, I'm told that the sewage lines and the water lines are extremely old, and work crews keep having to go in and repair these old pipes, so that's why they're not going to repave this area. Well, why not use some of these funds, like I said, to improve the infrastructure for those of us who are living here already? When industry do move here, we complain about people who get jobs live in other areas. Well, maybe if they had a decent place to live, they would stay here. Look at the condition of the unoccupied, unkept, unsafe houses and lots that are in residential areas. Those also could use assistance from the county since the county is willing to help. Help improve the conditions of everybody. And when we do have industries who are coming around, looking around, they are not going to just look at the industrial area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Donnie Laird.
Tonight is the night to vote. You council have to make the decision. Think about getting an $11.5 million building, $11.5 million building, for only eight million. That in itself is good. And think about this, also, we're not only getting it for eight million, but it's interest-free, and on top of that, there's no risk for the county. My thanks to all of Fairfield County members for discussing in public and executive session. In discussing, I am sure all had an input of putting this plan together, but not getting your credit by either abstaining the motion or voting no. My reason being, in many executive sessions in which you council participated in and public formed to answer questions, I would think you would come to the conclusion, this is the only economical solution and the thing to do. There was a statement made at one of the meetings that I abstain, as this is a neighborhood and should be kept that way. My answer that I put down is history of the campus goes back until 1777. During both the Revolutionary War and the Civil War, all this is important because it's a historical site, and we'd like to keep it that way. Both the Civil War, the Mount Zion campus was used as an encampment for opposing forces. It was chartered as a college in 1785. A new brick building was constructed in the 1880s. A modernized structure brick for all classes built in 1936. Noises of school buses, children playing, football games were heard. If administrative offices and sheriff offices are moved into Mount Zion, I would think it would be less noisy. All homes were built around the school. Families that bought into the Mount Zion area, the school was there. I would hope you agree not to tear down history and put it as a grassy field. Statement was made, I abstain, as I need more information to make a decision. My answer, I hope by now all information is available for your vote, and I hope the third reading information presented to council of a cap of eight million, maybe less, would satisfy a yes vote. If you vote no, it indicates that you do not support the proposal, but what are your reasons? Because we're going to have some problems coming up in the near future. The public would like to know, what are your plans to house these people? Is there a cheaper way? Are the buildings to move around, move people around during the restoration of needed repairs? Is it cost-efficient? Thank you.
Next, Mr. James Green.
My name's James Green. We moved, I was born in Savannah, Georgia in 1949, and we moved from there to East Tennessee, where I grew up in Johnson City. Then in 1972, after finishing college, we moved to mom's ancestral broomland from the 1760s in Greenbrier. I'm here just to echo what the others have said. I hope that you will keep the county offices downtown to promote downtown business, and the best place for that would be in the large Mount Zion campus building. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Shirley Green.
Shirley Green, District Two, Ridgeway. The government complex to better serve the citizens of Fairfield County. Dear councilpersons, I've spoken to you a number of times regarding this issue. Your job as councilpersons is both complex and challenging. You're called to make decisions that affect many lives. It is the quality of life of our citizens that I donate my time to enhance. With 5.8% unemployment and a lack of jobs in our county, many of our residents are losing their homes and going without food or medication just to pay bills. Substandard housing and lack of transportation still plague most of our citizens. How will this government complex better serve them when they live on the cusp of despair and homelessness? The financial aspects you are considering for the Fairfield County government complex are acceptable to me. You've stated that you set a spending limit of $8 million for completion of the project and that you lack the ability to borrow money for any other options. The option here that you've given the citizens of Fairfield County is take it or leave it. Yet I question some assumptions about future costs, since lease payments must provide sufficient cash flow to cover debt services, owner operating expenses, investor hurdles, as stated in the appendix, proposed lease terms stated by First and Main. No environmental impact and remediation for mold and asbestos was included in the price point given regarding the building expenses. The statement quoted indicates that regardless of what is stated, these costs will accrue to you. It is expensive to maintain 45,000 square feet of space. Major costs concerns I want you to consider during your final deliberations are Wi-Fi, Internet, phone installation, phone services, work for workers, 9/11 and sheriff department phone expenses, furniture, window coverings, electricity, gas and water bills, generators to keep 9/11 and sheriff services live during electrical outages, security, cleaning supplies, insurance, heating and cooling, HVAC maintenance, additional maintenance, outside and inside the complex. Fairfield County has deferred maintenance on 21,000 square feet of space in the current building. I ask you to vote no. I think you can do better.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Jennifer Jenkins.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, and good evening to all of you. I am from District Seven. To the citizens of Fairfield County Council and visitors, my name is Jennifer Moore Harper-Jenkins. I am the president for the Fairfield County NAAC, which is a very prestigious national organization founded to protect the rights of all people. Usually, people call us when they have tried all they can do to protect themselves from unjust circumstances. In some situations, we will provide a spokesperson, and in other times, we offer legal counsel, et cetera. I am also a citizen of Fairfield County, and I have major concerns about several issues surrounding the proposal to renovate the Mount Zion building. There has been several failed attempts over the years by the Mount Zion Society to use funds from our school district, our city, and now our county. It seems that the chairman is trying to save the Mount Zion building at all cost to the citizens. The old Fairfield High School building was renovated by the Fairfield Alumni Association. The society should do the same with Mount Zion. This council has fallen prey to the society's request and has selected a developer who has announced that he is related to members of the Saving Mount Zion Society and has a personal interest in the project. This council insists that the county owns the building, but the county does not own the building. The developer owns the building. There is no written proof that the council followed the procurement code. It is important that we search information. When I looked back on the $25 million that the county is spinning from right now, I found some interesting information, which led me to search the lease purchase contract. The lease purchase contract is in place in an agreement, but the county cannot purchase the building from a developer because of that situation. So now, what will you tell the citizens? I would be very, very happy if you could just be honest with the citizens and tell them the truth. We have petitions here that we would like to present to you, not right now, because this issue is not over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Dr. Marie Roseborough.
As most of you know, I grew up here in Fairfield County, as many of you did. My family settled here in the 1700s. I'm a product of the public school system. I retired from the position of deputy superintendent. I taught at Mount Zion for four years, parked in the parking lot where the monuments are. No one was allowed to park on that property, certainly not up near the building. I also drove a school bus in high school. The bus simply, I went around the side of the building, let the kids out, went around the back. Okay? So I'm sharing with you my experience. But the first thing that comes to mind is, I looked at the budgets that we've had over the past three years. Your budget since the last three years has increased almost $13 million. That's what's online, is your budgets over a three-year period have increased almost $13 million. That's rounding it up. That concerns me. Now, when I take, we were given figures of what it's going to cost to do, would cost to do Walmart, or this building, and this building, and so on. We were told that, of course, Mount Zion's going to be cheaper. I question, who came up with those figures? Was it the same architectural firm, or engineering firm, or were they associated with the developer? Exactly how were these figures come up? How did you come up with these figures? Was it based on square footage, an average amount? And what about the process? Did you consider lease purchase of, like, the Walmart, using the same financing way, doing it the same way? If you use the same way of financing it, then the condition of the building is what you would look at more closely. And of course, Walmart is in better condition. But the bottom line is, people in Mount Zion area got signatures on those petitions, don't want it. They would rather see the building torn down, trees planted, the property restored to what it was when the troops camp there. Certainly no park or anything of that nature. But there's a lot of disagreement, but we hope you'll make the decision based on the people who will be most affected by your decision. So many people support your effort, but they don't live next door. And that makes a difference. I won't be able to walk at my back door, front door, without seeing all those cars. Was that the bell? Okay. I think that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes segment one.
Thank you. We have no public hearings for tonight. We're down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. First, we have item A, second reading of ordinance number 708. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement between Fairfield County and the Fairfield County Hospital Board, also known as Fairfield Memorial Hospital and other related matters. Do we have a motion?
No.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to give second reading to ordinance number 708. Any discussion? I'd just like to ask Mr. Taylor if you could briefly explain, since we're at second reading, so folks are aware of what that's about.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. I'll do a leadoff, and then I probably will turn it over to Mr. Morgan, our attorney, who has helped us develop this lease agreement. Essentially, what's happening is the hospital needs to lease property or office space back from the county in this transition period, where we're purchasing some of, it's on, I'm just apparently not leaning close enough, sorry. They're having to lease backs office space from us in this transition period, where we're purchasing the building, but they'll still be occupying some of it. And that's primarily the finance office. It's not a very large space, and it's about $10 a square foot that they're anticipating with a yearly fee of $18,750, but that would terminate. We don't expect a full year's lease by any means. Mr. Morgan, would you like to add to that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Chairman, members of council. The lease is for a downstairs portion, approximately 1,875 feet, in the medical office building, commonly known as the Dr. Gaddy Building. The hospital currently has their financial office in the downstairs, kind of the middle bay area. On the way the building is set up, it does have approximately three bays, both in the downstairs area. And so the lease is for the hospital to continue to occupy that facility, that area, while it winds down operations. And at that point in time, when the closing of the hospital, then the county would be owning it. So that's, the provisions for the lease provide for a one-year term, and then for some renewals if necessary, but also allows for the hospital, should they wind up operations quicker, to have a 60-day notice to exit the premises.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Any questions from council? All right, thank you. The motion's been made and properly seconded. Those in favor of providing second reading to ordinance number 708?
Uh-huh.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, ordinance 708 is provided second reading. We'll skip third and final reading of ordinance number 707, since we've got that as an executive session item. We're now down to resolution 2018-08. This is a resolution establishing the millages for Fairfield County for the fiscal year 2017 through 2018. Do we have a motion?
No.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to approve resolution 2018-08. Any discussion? I'd just like to ask Mr. Taylor, you've just explained the millage rate's the same, but if you'd just, I'm sure you can say something about it.
Again, we worked closely with Peggy Hensley, our auditor, with the county to develop the millage rate, or ensure that the millage rate that is applied is equitable and fair and will generate the money needed to operate the county. The millage rate has not changed. It has remained the same at 152.6 miles.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Anything else? All right, those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Those opposed? By vote of seven to zero, resolution 2018-08 is approved. We're now down to resolution 2018-09. This is a resolution amending, restating, and ratifying the organizational rules and bylaws of the Fairfield County Council. Do we have a motion?
No.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to approve resolution 2018-09. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Goins.
Could you give a word?
Yes, I'll defer to staff on it, but...
Certainly. Recently, we introduced a proposal to create a joint water and sewer authority, and to populate the members of that joint water and sewer authority, we need for the council to be able to appoint members, and this resolution allows you all to be able to appoint members to that new water and sewer authority.
Yes, Mr. Trapp.
Water sewer authority, how many members will it have?
I think we are at seven. We would flex back and forth on that.
Mr. Trapp, there will be seven total members, three which will be appointed by Fairfield County Council.
And they will be appointed by who?
You would have some appointed by the county council, some appointed by the town council, and we're looking at possibly one other appointment to be from an outside.
Yeah, but I believe it's three from each governing body, and then one that we would appoint as a group.
So any other water company is involved besides the town of Winsboro?
Initially, we're working with the town of Winsboro. We do anticipate in the future to reach out to others, but to form it initially, we're working with Winsboro because they're the major provider of water and sewer in the county.
But as of now, is any other water company?
No, sir.
So it's not going to be a board member coming from another water company?
Well, that's, again, we're in discussions right now to look at one other water department.
What other water company is that?
That would be Mitford.
Mitford.
We haven't finalized that with the town yet, and we would bring that back to you all.
Right, anything else? Ms. Goins?
Yes.
Yes.
On this water authority, number one. On the water authority, number one, I would like to say, when we talk about economic development and we talk about infrastructure, this is a part of building that structure. It's not about anybody taking over, anybody having control. Western Fairfield is in dire need of a good water... Western Fairfield is in dire need of a good water system, also a sewer system, not only there, but Fairfield County as a whole. All of this is a part of our quality of life, and we can't look at things as somebody, as nobody being in control is just using who we have and what we have to come together to build the county for a better quality of life.
Thank you, Mrs. Goins. Mr. Trapp, yes?
When I was asking questions, I wasn't making a statement that someone was trying to take over. I was just concerned if we asked another member from another water company, it looked like we asked one from Jenkinsville as well, Mid County. It seemed like we picking one over the others.
Again, initially, we started with the town, and the genesis of this is primarily because our economic development sites, our industrial sites are served by the town of Winsboro, so that's the natural relationship we started with, because we need to make sure that those industrial sites are more than just land, but they have the water and sewer so they can attract the industry. So that made sense, and then we had Mitford reach out to us.
So if Jenkinsville or Mid County reach out, are we going to include them?
Certainly.
Thank you. I would love to say that, or say that I would love to see it happen, that we could get everybody in the agreement, so that we could really reach out and help all water providers, and then, of course, the town of Winsboro. I don't know if Ridgeway provides sewer, but everybody in it if we possibly can, and, you know, take advantage of economies of scale. Right now, you've got, you know, I think it's five, four, five different water companies in the county, and they kind of, you know, they sell water back and forth to each other and everything else. I think if we could get everybody under one roof, that might be a good thing for all the citizens of the county and help lower their rates over time. Absolutely, absolutely. So, anyway, those in favor? Those opposed? By a vote of seven to zero, resolution 2018-09 is adopted. We now have board and commission minutes. We have two of those for tonight. Hospital Board and Disabilities and Special Needs Board, as was forwarded to you in your packet. Do we have a motion?
Move.
It's been moved and properly seconded. The council approved these minutes as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Those opposed? By a vote of seven to zero, those minutes are approved. We are now down to board and commission appointments. We have one for tonight. That's the library commission, Mrs. Ida B. Canty from District One. Do we have a motion? Motion's been made and properly seconded. I put Mrs. Ida B. Canty from District One on the library commission. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Those opposed? By a vote of seven to zero, that appointment's been made. We have no old business, new business. Proclamation recognizing October 7 through 13 as National Fire Prevention Week. We'll go ahead first and make a motion on this, if we could get one, please? All right. We've got a motion's been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? If Mr. Taylor or if anyone else would like to say anything about it, but...
Vote.
Step up to the plate.
I'll just say thank you. This year's theme for National Fire Prevention Week is Look, Listen, and Learn, and that's the theme that we've been presenting this week, and so we're just thankful to the council for passing this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? While you're here with us, I just want to say to you that I think you're doing a good job with recruitment. I've seen a big pickup in the effort on that, and so I hope that that proves fruitful, but I just wanted to tell you, I thought that was good, that, you know, just being out in the community, you're able to see that.
Yes, sir.
A lot more now, so thank you. All right. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Those in favor? Those opposed? By a vote of seven to zero, council has recognized October 7 through 13, 2018, as National Fire Prevention Week. Present this to Mr. Pope. County Administrator's report. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Pope. Exactly. I'll just turn it over to Jason, because we, again, have our department head report, and Mr. Pope is our department head tonight to lead us off.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Taylor and council, to tell you a little bit about what's been going on in the fire service center, and it has been very exciting. Been here about eight months, and things are really, really going well. Rather than telling you about some of the good things that our volunteers are doing, I want to show you a little video. It's five minutes long. I think Mr. Davis has it up on the computer, and just take a look at what your volunteers have been doing over the last eight months. Thank you for playing that. Anytime I get a chance to brag on our members, I take it, and my hat's off to them, because what you see there is some brave men and women who do this every day for free, and they do a good job at it. So, thank you for showing the video. Let me tell you a little bit about our organization. We have five full-time staff. Three of those are admin, myself, a deputy director, Greg Gerber, who's here, full-time admin, assistants, Ms. Katie Jernigan. We have two full-time firemen that we hired last year. One of those is here tonight. Thank you, Jay, for being here. Soon to be seven. We're currently advertising for two more, so we'll have seven full-time staff. We also have three part-time staff. These three part-timers are full-time, they're career firefighters at other departments, and they work here on their days off, and they help us with maintenance of all the fire stations and the equipment around the county. We have 14 fire stations, soon to be 15 if all goes well. We have 120 volunteer firefighters, and as I've said here before you, before, we need twice that many. What I like to do is I like to spend the remainder of our time talking about our challenges, and then try to offer or share some thoughts about where I think we need to be headed. The challenges are constant. We are, as in all volunteer service, extremely vulnerable during the daytime. And daytime, I mean Monday to Friday, eight to five. We are extremely vulnerable. If you remember back in March, I stood before you, and we talked about the woods fires that we had out in Jenkinsville. We had 30 personnel on that scene that day, and it was a Saturday. You know, had that incident happened during the week, it would have been a different outcome or a different story. Also, during the recent Hurricane Florence response, we had about 20 volunteers who staffed five stations for a 12-hour shift on a Saturday, which was wonderful. They did that for no compensation. They, we were, thank goodness, we weren't that busy. We didn't have a high call volume during the storm response, but we were ready. And they were there all day. They gave up their Saturday. Again, the same situation. Had it been during the week, it would have been difficult to have that coverage. At a recent shortage of daytime personnel greatly hampered our firefighting efforts at a recent house fire in Caution Drive, which is up in the Mitford community. We only had five firefighters on scene that day. Now, we had more personnel there. We had some of our dedicated volunteers from Dutchman Creek. As you know, we've got, those are some of the most dedicated volunteers that are around. They're, it's a retirement age group, and so they only have a handful of firefighters or people that actually go in and fight fire. So, they were there, and they did a lot of good work, but we got to have people to go in and fight fire to actually make a difference. We'll always be a mostly volunteer service. We'll always have more volunteers than paid service, and we have been actively recruiting, myself and others, new volunteers for over 10 years. And sad to report, the numbers are just not increasing. They're holding steady, I think, and as Mr. Smith mentioned, we are picking up a little bit, and we're picking up some interest as we share a lot what we do through social media, and that's kind of generated some interest. The challenges are the same. We have an increased training time. 25 years ago, to get somebody certified and trained to fight fire, it was a 40-hour class. Now, it's three times that as far as the training. So, to get somebody in the door to train to fight fire, to drive apparatus, you're talking 200 hours of training that it takes to get them in the door. That's extremely challenging for young people, especially with families. As you know, we have a transient workforce. 50% of our volunteers who still work, work outside of the county. So 50% of those, they're not even here during the daytime. The employers, if you remember, used to let people leave work to go fight fire. That doesn't happen anymore. Those days are gone. That is, I don't know of any community in the state that even allows that anymore. So, next budget year, I'll be back here asking for more paid staff. We did apply for a federal grant this year to hire 10 firefighters. We did not get that grant. We will apply for that next year. So what do I think we're headed? One thing I can tell you, I've been all over this state, folks. I've traveled this state through my previous work experience, and I've been all around. And Fairfield County has some of the best fire equipment around in this state. When it comes to fire apparatus and some of the stations, I'm telling you guys, we have some of the best. That is something to be proud of. I know our people are thankful for that. I thank you, this council and previous councils, for investing in the best fire apparatus that we can buy. The new Engine 71, if you just saw it, just went into service this past Friday. That's over in Ridgway, and that's a very nice fire truck, their first full-size fire truck, I think, as one reporter put it. But, and for the most part, we have a standardized fleet across the county when it comes to engines, pumpers, and tankers, which is a huge benefit, because we often have to help out other stations, and it's really nice to have a standardized fleet of equipment. We are planning to build a new substation near the intersection of River Road and Windmill, and that, I know that's not finalized yet, but when that station gets built, there will be approximately 300 homes in that area that will see lower insurance rates when it gets an ISO rating, so that will be a big plus. I've been working with the county fire chiefs to develop a five- and a 10-year plan, because we have to have a vision about where we're going. When I consider the growth that I think is in our future, I look to Clarendon County, because I think they offer us a realistic example. Let me tell you a little bit about Clarendon County. It's a similar-sized county as far as geography goes. It's mostly rural, very similar to ours. They have a little more people. They're right at 32,500, 32,500 people. Their county operational budget is $27 million. Their county fire department budget is $3.6 million. It is funded through a special tax district. They have 35 full-time employees, and they cover, they staff five stations for 24/7 with two people, two firefighters per station. Now, you know, if somebody found a money tree, that'd be nice, and if tomorrow you gave me 3.5 million, go do it, we would, I couldn't do it right away. We have an issue that we have to handle first, and that is, we have to upgrade our fire stations, our current facilities. And currently, only two of our fire stations can house full-time people. So we got 14 buildings, really only two of them could I put people at 24/7 at a building today. So, the, and even the brand-new, as nice as the Ridgway Fire Station is, it doesn't have showers or even living quarters in it. So, that's even a limiting factor for that station. And you might ask, I've even got asked from some of my volunteers, why do you have to have showers in a station? Well, that's a good question. Well, the number one, if you know anything about firefighter cancer, firefighters have a 40% higher chance of contracting cancer because of the work they do. One of the number-one cancer prevention methods is to, after fighting a fire, immediately, decon, clean your gear, and get a shower, immediately, as quick as possible. So, it's unreasonable for me to ask and to hire a full-time employee and put him in a building with no showers. It's not safe, it's not wise, and I just can't in good conscience do it. I've submitted a plan for this, and made, Mr. Davis, I've met with Mr. Davis and several others about addressing this issue, and we got to come up with a plan, and we're doing that. The volunteers, as dedicated as they are, and again, I brag on them, they're playing catch-up the entire time. They're behind the eight ball from the get-go. In a legacy-built home, the occupants had 10 to 15 minutes to get out of a fire safely. In today's modern homes, you have about three to five minutes to get out safely. That's a scary statistics. Today's homes, they burn hotter and they burn faster. By placing full-time staff at the fire stations, it allows our apparatus to respond immediately. They can get out of the door at time of dispatch. So, instead of first the volunteers having to go to a station first and then respond to fire apparatus, they can go straight to the scene, which will greatly enhance our efforts. The two biggest factors that affect ISO ratings, and everybody knows what ISO ratings are, that affects your homeowner's insurance, your fire insurance. The two biggest things that affect that or that can lower it, manpower and water. You've talked about a Water and Sewer Authority, big, 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 important thing for us, water throughout the county, because there are some counties who do not have water. That's a big thing. Personnel and water. That would bring lower ISO rates to this county. The average response time of some of our volunteer stations is 10 to 20 minutes. At our one paid station, which is Jenkinsville, again, daytime, it's daytime shift only, it's not 24/7, but daytime, the response is immediate. And, of course, we go to more than just fire calls. Last month, Engine 61, which is the engine that, the fire engine at it, Jenkinsville, that fire engine ran 21 medical calls, and guess how many fire calls? Zero. 21 medical calls they went, and they were helping out with their EMS friends. So, we do more than just fight fire, and so that's a part of our future. The starting pay for our full-time firefighters is actually several thousand dollars above the state average. So, I don't think we're going to have a problem. We'll be competitive as far as hiring new people coming in here. In summary, we have some of the best and most dedicated volunteers. Adding paid firefighters will never replace them. We will always be a mostly volunteer system, and we need every one of them. The paid staff only enhances the services that we can provide, and the citizens of our counties will be the beneficiary. Any questions for me? Any questions for me? Mr. Roof?
I don't have any questions. I just thank you for the job you've done. You hadn't been here long, but you're doing a fantastic job, and thanks to all the volunteer firemen, and that they, like you said, they risk their lives for us and for our safety and for minimal pay. They, they love what they do, and we just appreciate y'all for what you do.
Yes, sir. You're right. Thank you.
And definitely want to just give a shout-out. I thank you. I understand your risk. I pray for you, and I don't think sometimes people realize what other people do so our lives can be better. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Next up, we have Mr. Paul Dove. He's our library board chairman. He's here to give us an update on the Ridgway, the new Ridgway Library.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of county council, Mr. Taylor, administrator. I am Paul Dove, and I have the privilege of serving as chair of your Fairfield County Library Commission. On behalf of the commission, I would like to express our appreciation to you for the support you have given us in, in helping re-establish a public library, public library branch in Ridgway. As you may know, a year and a half ago, we had to abandon the facility there due to environmental issues, and over the year and a half, had not been able to find a replacement. Thanks to the legwork, and I think that's the only way to express it, of council member Roof and administrator Taylor, the facility was finally located. Contract was negotiated. Your work, your staff re-refurbished the building inside, bringing it up to ADA compliance standards, and doing a little aesthetic improvement in, in the facility. If you've not had a chance to see it yet, I, I invite you to come see it. Mr. Robinson, our county library director, and I went through it a couple of weeks ago. It was about ready. As soon as we can get some technology issues ironed out with internet, because the whole system is dependent on that, we'll be ready to cut the ribbon. And so, on be, on behalf of the commission, I really wanted to express our deep appreciation to you for, for supporting this effort, and especially to Councilman Roof and, and Administrator Taylor for, I guess the nicest way I can say this is holding our feet to the fire to make sure this, this did come about. And we, the commission had looked on it, looked at it for a good while, so we're so grateful that a solution was found and, and looks like it, it's going to work out perfectly. I think the shelving has been installed. I think the staff is now looking at which books they want to put there and get the technology in place to bring up the computers. So, we're almost there. Now, the, the only complaint we had was that next door, there's a street and then a, then a little chain-leak fenced, fence is a liquor store, and, and some folks thought that was not good. Other folks said they thought that was an advantage. I don't know. But on, on a personal note, I, I really do appreciate the fact that, that you as a county council obviously understand the, the strong connection between public library service and economic development. So, I think we've taken a, a big step forward in Ridgway, and, and your commission is so grateful for that support. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dove. Anyone on council?
Yeah, I just want to, I'll thank you, Chairman Dove, and all board members for seeing this through, and, and we just appreciate the support because without y'all, this would not happen, and we certainly appreciate it. There's been a library in Ridgway for as long as, before I was born, and, and so many people missed it when it was gone, and the, and the bookmobile was hot, and it was rarely there. And so, you know, this is ground-level. There's some parking there, and, and it's going to be very nice. The work was done in-house fairly reasonably, and so I think it's going to be a great asset to Ridgway and the neighboring, neighboring area around Ridgway.
And, and Mr. Councilmember, I think the best thing that can happen is there will be so much pressure on us to expand the hours that we will have to come back and say we need more staff. Thank you.
Well, that would be great because the, the prior library, I agree, was not open enough, and so I think that's very much needed, longer hours, because young and old for so many things is very much needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I'll just say thank you, Mr. Dove, and you know what they say about earning a stemming waste best works.
The next item I have was the quarterly financial report. I think all councilmen have received a copy of that. If you do have any questions concerning the quarterly financial, let myself know, and we'll get those answered for you. Next up, we do have a discussion on economic development. I'll get Mr. Ty Davenport, our economic development director. We've had some questions asked, and Ty, the presentation on, again, we see economic development. The economy is doing well right now. We see things happening in Richland County and Orangeburg, and let's turn these lights down again so we can see. But I want Ty to tell, to tell us what's going on here, and, and also some of the challenges we face and why we're not seeing some of the development that, again, Newberry and, and Richland County have.
Thank you, councilman, Mr. Taylor. Glad to be here. I love to talk about economic development and what we're doing in Fairfield County. The economy is doing well, and we need to, we need to keep up with it. So, we, we've, we've got some challenges that we need, that we're addressing, and so I'm going to go with that, go with that now. Let's see if this... Well, you have to help me, Andrew Davis.
All right. First, I'd like to talk about the kind of projects we work as economic developers. We kind of define things in, in sort of five different categories. We work existing, companies come in looking for an existing building, so that's an existing building project. Greenfields are maybe going to industrial park where they can build something from the ground up. The mega projects are kind of few and far between, but they're the, you know, the brass ring, the home run with bases loaded that, that, you know, you hit once every twenty-five years. Rail projects are a little unique, and then our, kind of our favorite is existing industry. We like to see our local companies grow and prosper. And then the last one is kind of pipe dreams, which tend to come about when the government says they're going to be doing grants for tire recycling or something like that, and then every, everybody comes out of the woodwork wanting to try to get money to do tire recycling. So, we end up having to deal with that, and usually they're not, they don't go anywhere. So, this is just sort of the way, I've got a, I've got a flowchart here, just sort of the way projects work. And the way they just started, the company itself does some, some pre-planning, and they look at what they need, their labor requirement, the utilities, transportation, what kind of costs they can expect, taxes, that kind of thing. And all this goes on before we even know that, know that they're out there. They look at the, the geography where they, where they think would be a good, you know, good location for us. They, they try to identify, you know, areas that are, that work for them. They compile all this, and then they start eliminating sites. So, a lot of times, we're, we're, we're in the mix of forty communities, and we get eliminated right here on paper before I even have, have an opportunity to meet with them. At that point, they start to contact us, and typically it comes to the state. They'll go to the state of South Carolina, Department of Commerce there, and Department of Commerce will say, yes, it might be a good fit for Fairfield County, Clarendon County, and Lawrence County. And then, then they begin to work through the process. But Davis, site visits are made. Companies come in and out. They, they'll, they'll have engineers come in and look at, look at sites, look at the dirt or the building, whatever it is. Then, maybe the next round, they'll come in and talk to employers about what kind of workforce we have, maybe meet with the school system. Dr. Green's met with several prospects recently. And then, after they compile all that information, they got a feel for the community, they make a decision. And if we're one of three, hopefully we're, you know, we end up being number one at that point. The existing building projects, that, that's fifty percent of the, of the projects that come through are, well, actually more than fifty percent, but are looking for existing buildings. And in Fairfield County, you know, I've heard people say, we've got all these empty buildings. We really don't in, from an industrial building standpoint. We have the Speculative Building out at Walter Brown Industrial Park. We have the former Mack Truck Facility, Guardian Facility that's vacant. We have some space left in the Charm Building over in Ridgway, and Paul Fazio's Building could be used by somebody productively, and that, that's really about it. I don't know if, the Caterpillar Building and the building across the street from it have both been, are both occupied. Caterpillar was purchased, and I think eventually we'll see a good bit of employment there, but right now, they're trying to put their business plan together. It's a company called CTG. They're Chinese, and these tariffs affect what they do, so they're, they're not sure where they're, how much growth they'll have or how fast that growth will be and what their business plan is. But they're working on that. And these are pictures of the buildings. You got the, everybody knows the Mack Truck Building, the Commerce Building over in the far left, the Charm Facility in, in Ridgway, and then Mr. Fazio's Building up there on the, on the upper left. The Phillips Granite is also in our inventory, unique building, has a big crane in it, and maybe somebody could come in there and take engines out of, you know, trucks or, you know, something like that, but it's real unique, and it'd be, it'd be special to find somebody. So, when you look around the state at what, what our competition is, and this is just South Carolina, we're competing with the entire southeast. There are, if you add these numbers up, there are a hundred buildings that compete with the Spec Building that we, that we built. So, that's, you know, one in a hundred. We've got to really do, we've got to, we've got to meet a lot of different criteria for it to narrow down to us. I think we're fortunate. If you look at the upstate where you have twenty-eight buildings, and you look at the low country that also has twenty-eight buildings, those, the projects that go there tend to be focused on Volvo BMW, you know, Volvo in the lower part of the state, BMW in the upstate, Boeing in the lower part of the state. So, the, the labor force is, is consumed there. The unemployment rate is low, so we're kind of in the middle. So, I think you, we're in a pretty good position right now to take advantage of, of the workforce situation. Then we have greenfield projects. So, what we have, the kind of product we have is we've got forty acres left in Walter Brown, which is where Azola and Meckrelang and those companies are, and now CTG. And then the Commerce Center, real excited about this. We've got seven-hundred-plus acres over there, right at seven-hundred acres, and we've got, we just installed a road through there, water and sewer, and we're, we've opened up about four-hundred-and-fifty acres for development of this almost seven-hundred acres. We brought it in almost, almost a million dollars under budget. It took us a little longer because we stopped and did some redesign, thought some things through, but we, we came in a lot cheaper than we, than we anticipated. The, we, we only have one real rail site other than the mega site, and it's, it's on thirty-four. Then we've got some other sites across the county that we can kind of put together. But that, that is a very small inventory. So, our product that we have to sell is, is limited. I'll show you some examples of some other counties here in a minute, but, you know, if you go up to Chester County, they have thirty-two investigated sites. And what I mean by investigated, they've done studies on geotechnical studies, they've done some environmental studies and all that, that, that they can show industry that these sites are ready, that have water, sewer, are on rail, and we've got, you know, this is what we have right here. So, we're at a real disadvantage. That's just Chester County. We haven't gotten to Richland County or Orangeburg. You know, Orangeburg's in a similar situation to Fairfield County. They're the kind of the county next to Columbia, just, just on the south side. We're on the north side. And, you know, the economic developer in that county, his goal is to pave the entire county, but, and he's getting close. He's getting close. So, I think they've got ten industrial parks in Orangeburg County. You know, we've got two, and one of them only has forty acres left in it. So, we're, you know, we've got to get our act together, and we've got to get sewer in the ground, water in the ground if we're going to, if we're going to grow. This is Walter Brown, and it shows the, I guess, the forty acre, the buildings kind of on the bottom, those are all there, and then the buildings on the top are, are just renderings. And so, that's what, that's the property we have available there, and really, we just have the one, the one larger site that's kind of viable for industry. Go ahead. Okay, and this is, I'm sorry about the size of this, but this is the new industrial park, Fairfield Commerce Center. That's, that shows you about, there are about twenty, twenty properties there, and we can get to fifteen of them right now with, with the road system that we have in place and the water sewer that we have in place. So, we did the right thing by getting, by getting infrastructure in place, water, sewer, gas, electric, all that's there, everything, everything a company needs, the, the studies have been done, environmental, all that. There should be no risk for somebody to come in and take in space here. What we don't have, and what we're working on and doing a good job with, is this Water and Sewer Commission, that, the authority that we, that we've been talking about. We have, we, our capacity is thirty-four thousand gallons a day. We should have for, we should have for industrial use at a minimum eight-hundred thousand gallons a day. You probably need over a million. You know, the mega site, if it works out, it, it needs to have a million gallons available to it. So, we got a, we got a ways to go there. Go ahead, Davis. And you, so we got a ways to go there. So, the, we also have the, the mega site property, which is about almost twelve-hundred acres. We have seen, actually seen a lot of activity on, on, on the property already. We've had numerous site visits by consultants, so that's looking good. But we don't have, we don't have the infrastructure there yet, and we're working on that. We've got a two-million-dollar grant to study how to get all, how to get water, sewer, gas, electric, rail, all to the site. So, we're going through that process now. We've got a top-rate engineering firm who's kind of overseeing the, the development of all that, kind of helping us, directing us on what, where we need to put our emphasis as far as, as far as infrastructure. So, one of the, one of the things we end up doing is, the way projects start is we get an RFI, which is a request for information. I know this is small, and you can't see it, but this is, this is very typical. We'll get this on the front end of a project. A consultant will send to the, send us this, and this is about a hundred and fifty questions, and it takes us three or four days to go through it. So, you know, I might, I might send this to, to Jason to ask, answer a question about fire service, and send it to, to town of Windsboro to answer questions about water and sewer, to, to, you know, Truvista. All those, all those folks, we pull them all in. So, but this is just very complicated, and you really do get into, into the weeds. So, we have to know what we have. Just quickly, rail projects are, are another thing that's, that we look at. We're, we're kind of at a disadvantage there to our neighbors in Chester and Richland County. I'll go through that. Go ahead. As an example, this is Richland County. You can see the CSX line that runs to the north and the Norfolk Southern lines that run to the south, and there are five industries in there, and they, they, they're served by those lines, and they run one common line in between them, and they, they force Norfolk and Southern and CSX to compete against each other. So, companies would probably rather go there where they can make, or sites like this, where they can make the two rail lines compete for transportation and reducing their transportation costs as opposed to one of our sites that's, you know, simply Norfolk Southern. So, we, we get cut from a lot of the, the rail, the rail sites, rail projects. Go ahead. And this is just an illustration of Chester's thirty-two properties. Most of them are on the LNC rail line that is a go-between, in between CSX and Norfolk Southern, that allows them to work the two rail companies against each other. So, this is what we're competing against. And then you, so you combine that with thirty-four thousand gallons a day, and sewer and water are the backbone of economic development. Sewer, water, and public education, good, 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 good workforce, the backbone of economic development. So, we, we need to be putting pipe in the ground, big pipe in the ground. Just a rundown of the number of projects. We've had ninety-three projects in the last, since the third quarter of twenty-three, or twenty-sixteen, and the number of visits, thirty-eight. We average about seventeen, I think, a quarter. Go ahead. And then this is what they're, where they're looking. The Spec Building gets a lot of looks. The Guardian Building, Mack Truck Building gets a lot of looks. Commerce Center's next, and then Paul Fazio's Building and the Caterpillar Building, which is now off the market, and then the rest are, you know, smaller. So, that's kind of the, that's kind of a, a quick rundown of how, how things work, but the, but the big thing I can tell you is that we are behind our neighbors and our competition as far as, as infrastructure, and it's been that way since, since, you know, since, since we got here, but we're working on it, and I think the, the Water and Sewer Authority is going to be a big help. So, glad to, any questions? Councilmembers? Mr. Roof?
Yeah, I know you can't speak in specifics, do, but is there anything positive that you can share that you feel good about in the near future?
Yeah, I've probably seen a lot of cars and trucks over the Mack Truck Building, people doing studies over there, so I think there, there's a lot of interest in that building. We've got another, another company- We've got another, another company that, that we, we did an interesting thing, we did a survey, or we put a survey out to the public and asked how many, how many people would work at this rate in this kind of industry, and, and we're gathering responses now, and if, if, if our response rate is high enough, this company will probably come and take the spec building. But it's, it's all a matter of them being able to get enough people. So that's what they're concerned with there. But yeah, I'm, I'm really excited about those two, particularly the, all the activity over the Mack Truck Building. Very excited about that. Anyone else?
Okay. And want to say, and this company is definitely looking local.
Oh, yeah.
So it's important that the information gets out there from the public, from people in the public, let them know that this company is looking for people to employ, but it's all about jobs, jobs, jobs.
Right.
So this is where the rubber meets the road.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And I've, I've given, today I gave Karen the link to, to the survey, so if you know anybody who's interested in, in a job, go to the county Facebook page, and there's, there'll be something there, and they can get to the, they can get to the survey, take the survey. And y'all all take the survey and say, yes, you want to work there, because we need, we need more than anything, as I say, we need numbers saying that, you know, that we're willing to work. I know that if we, if this company comes and, and started hiring, we'd have the people. We could fill, we could fill the positions, but they're concerned, and, and I would be too, if I was in their position, because the, the unemployment rate, even though ours is relatively high at, I think we're at 5.2 now, it's still, you know, that's still historically low. Robinson?
Thank you, Ms. Davenport. I'm guessing, is Walmart and companies like this, is this part of your recruiting efforts? Or what, or, Betty Ed, what are your recruiting efforts like?
That's a good question. The Walmart building is a, it's not an industrial building. The ceilings are low, machinery, you know, is tall, and people like to stack up 30 feet, you know, just efficient use of space and that kind of thing. But we do question companies when we're talking about, you know, what do you, what do you really need, and, and we've got the Walmart building in the back of our minds. Could we make this work? You know, is there something we could do? Maybe we could help, you know, if you build something off the side of it, whatever. We try to get it, get it into the mix, but it is, it is not an industrial building, and so it just takes, it's going to take a special, you know, someone to go in there. You know, truly, we'd rather see a retailer go back in there. That's what it's, the best use for it. But I guarantee if we could, we could shoehorn a manufacturer, distributor, distributor in there, we would, yep. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Thank you. Chairman, that's all I had. All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor. No clerk to council's report tonight, second public comment session. Mrs. Davis?
We have four to speak tonight. First, Ms. Peggy Swerengen, speaking on Does Color Matter?
Does color matter? In some cases it does. Let's figure this out together. For instance, tomatoes, I like mine red on bread with Duke's mayonnaise. Some people like them green and fried. Apples come in all colors, yellow, red, green. Does color matter? I guess taste-wise, yes, maybe, but they're all apples. Fig's green, no way, but brown, yes, please. So you ask, where are you going with this craziness? Skin color, black or white? We are all God's children, and we should be able to get along. Racism is an ugly word. Webster's meaning is prejudice or discrimination directed against someone of a different race based on the belief that one's own race is superior. So whether you are black or white, being on county council and making decisions with the taxpayers' money can be compared to running a business. Would you want your chief financial officer of your own personal business spending your money without reading and understanding all of the options, and understanding the ramifications of the long-term effects on money spent, the amount being a total of $24 million, and not knowing where the money has gone, and asking to know five years later where the money went to? This would be just cause for dismissal of your chief financial officer, whether they are black or white, in my opinion. We must, as taxpayers, research, listen, and pray to make the best decision into which person, whether white or black, will be the one to do the best job of managing our hard-earned tax money, and make the decisions wisely on how to use it to move our county forward, and get us out of this defunct state that we are currently in. We need business-minded people who understand the ins and outs of running a business on a day-to-day basis, and people that you can count on to make wise, long-term decisions, and not haphazardly go about our county's business so flippantly. People, we must pass the mindset that blacks have to vote for blacks because of the color, and vice versa with whites. Do your research. Who is the best qualified to get the job done? Too much is at stake for our county in this critical time of decision-making for us to forge ahead and become a place where we will be financially stable, and to be a thriving county once again. We cannot, we must not let the bad decisions made by previous council hold us back anymore. We will, as a unified body, and with God's help, overcome these obstacles, and we will thrive once again. Do your homework, taxpayers and voters. Do your homework.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Clarence Gilbert, speaking on Food for Thought.
Good evening, Chairman, council members, and fellow citizens. My name is Clarence Gilbert from District 7. I've been attending the county meetings, and I've seen different issues turn people that had grew up together and lived in a segment neighborhood almost come to blows. It is time for the citizens of this county to put aside our differences and come together, and let's come up with a way to make our county better. I was once told that if you're always looking back on what happened in the past, then you can't see what's going to happen in the, in the future. If we continue to disagree among ourselves, no one or company will want to settle here. I don't have all the answers. The old saying, a man that knows everything can't be taught anything, but a man that listens can learn something. If we're to come, if we come together and listen to each other, then we can move forward. We cannot continue in our state, in our present stage, state. We have got to come up with a way to make Fairfield County to appeal to companies and other entities that will want to come here. Please, let's work together for the sake of our families and county. God bless Fairfield County.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Jackie Workman, speaking on Recreation.
I have to hurry up and get up, but I have to watch Mr. Anderson with the clock. To our chairman, Chairman Smith, and to our county administrator, Mr. Taylor. And I'm down for Recreation, but I want to say something before that, before I lose my train of thought, to Mr. Davenport. I have always thought you was just supposed to help create jobs, and know why I thought that? Because the previous council, some of the council members, and the department, that brought one, got 1,000 people jobs in this county. Now, why would you do that when Mr. Davenport's job is not even to get jobs? And yes, I'm talking about jobs, 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 because that's what's needed. Now, I heard him say that a company is possibly looking, and that a survey have gone out. I have not received a survey. I haven't heard it mentioned in our churches, so therefore, who has a survey? How do people know about jobs, 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 that's needed for quality of life? Do we want to go back to, as the Bible says, kill and steal and destroy? Well, that's what will happen without jobs. Now, what I'm here to talk about. Let me watch the clock. Got to watch Mr. Anderson. The multipurpose center had to relocate to Jenkinsville because the 8.12 acres of land did not meet FARC's Recreation Division approval. My question is, what is the current status of FARC decision process on this matter? And I hope truly that you will have an answer for us at the next meeting, because, you know, we can ask you all, all the questions you want, you don't even answer. But I really would like for you all to answer this, because there was one of Mr. Anderson's tasks from the community to me. See, I remember everything, and he have not answered us yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Lonnie Campbell, speaking on Rock Around the Clock.
Mr. Chairman, council member, council members, fellow citizens. I am Lonnie Campbell, a longtime resident of Fairfield County. My wife, Wanda, and I having lived in the Mitford area since 1992. We currently own seven business properties on Congress Street. While my wife, along with many others, has devoted innumerable hours trying to improve the business environment in the town, these efforts have received very little support from town officials. In addition, it is quite obvious that they are receiving no support whatsoever from the Fairfield County Chamber of Commerce. As background, Corrin Stone, Ed Godwin, and Wanda came up with the idea of promoting Fairfield County while also raising funds for the Sheriff's Dare Program by having a classic and exotic car Veterans Day charity poker run throughout the county on Saturday, November 10th. As a prelude to this event, it was planned to bring a number of these cars to the Rock Around the Clock Festival and Car Show, with the intent of expanding the appeal of the festival and to encourage these owners to participate in the poker run. A number of meetings were held to discuss this. On August 31st, a merchants' meeting was held, attended by Sheriff Montgomery, both our county and deputy county administrators, District 2 Councilmember Douglas, Mr. Stone, Mr. Godwin, and various citizens and merchants, plus Mrs. Vickers and Mrs. Yenner. It was clearly stated that an area needed to be set aside for those vehicles, with that area to be in front of 125 Congress Street on both sides extending north to the barricades at the post office. These plans were clearly discussed with no lack of understanding expressed by any of the parties, and no notification by the chamber of any formal written process requirement. Instead, for the first time in anyone's memory, the barricades were moved just south of 125 Congress, clearly excluding the required area from the festival and opening up that area to normal traffic. Mr. Stone had 24 automobiles on their way to the event, and if not for Mr. McMaster allowing the use of his gravel parking lot behind, behind Congress Street, these vehicles would have had nowhere to go. I believe it is safe to say that these folks did not receive a positive impression of Windsboro and Fairfield County. It is apparent that the lack of support exhibited by the Chamber of Commerce has now grown to become, if not blatant sabotage, certainly passive resistance to the efforts of those who would strive to create positive change in the county. Efforts to promote Fairfield County to those folks who have no knowledge of what this county has to offer should be encouraged, and all assistance rendered to achieve success. I realize that the council does not directly control the Chamber of Commerce, but the council certainly controls the purse strings. I encourage each of you, in your official capacity, and as citizens of this fine county, to assist those who want to see positive growth, and not reward those who do otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes Segment 2.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. We're now down to council time. Do any council members have anything? Mr. Douglas?
Out of all the email correspondence and personal contact about the Mount John Project, I received one complaint, one. And this person that complained, even though I saw her at several meetings, worded her complaint as if she had not attended any meetings. There is an amount that we agreed on, that if it went over that amount, we would not go through with this project. The grants and tax incentives can only be used on the Mount John Project, not anywhere else. There's a, a small amount of abestus in and around the, from the boiler room, but that's only abestus in the building. An extra spaces in these buildings could be used for the courthouse personnel when they decide to redo the courthouse. We have bills and stuff to pay now for the county offices, so there wouldn't be any great amount more for us to keep up that billing as the ones we're doing right now. The town of Windsboro deeded the property to First and Main. It was not in Fairfield County's name. And after seven years, when we pay for it, it'll be deeded to Fairfield County. Some forget things that were discussed in detail. I reckon they just don't want to listen. And the millage rate in Fairfield County has not been raised at all in four years. I know in the last two years it hasn't, because I've been at the budget meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Just real quickly, before anyone else speaks, I've got no problem seeing anybody's progress, say whatever they want up here, but just want to remind everybody that we will have a chance to discuss that issue when we come out from executive session, motions made on the floor. Anyone else? Mrs. Goins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to touch bases on a few things that's been coming up on our past council, and I keep hearing about the bond situation and all that happened with that. And I've never said anything about it, and someone mentioned it to me again, and my response to them was, I do not believe that anyone at that particular time deliberately or intentionally made a loan against monies that were to be expected in good faith. Everybody expected that that project would be completed. So I don't put any weight on them. Also, if it were me sitting in that position, or maybe anybody else, would have done the same thing. Nobody knows what's going to happen, so they made it in good faith that it would be completed. So why, I don't know why we keep going over and over that. But from that, as I asked the question, I said, if the EMS, the fire stations, recreation, and all the other projects that we have now, and all the other benefits that we have now, if that bond had not been taken out, would we have had the money to do that? And the answer was no. So even though they did something, and it did not come out the way everybody thought that it should, or it would have, because we don't know, good still came out of it. When I looked at the report for the fire department, our EMS, I've called EMS many times. If it had not been for that action, maybe wouldn't have responded to me so fast, and to so many others. Many times, we just look at the negative part of what happened, but when we begin to see the good that can come out of something, and the good that has come out of it, which leads me into some events that I had the privilege of attending. Behavioral Health, they did a ceremony this week, this past week, and I was just, I was just humbled and grateful. There was a young lady there, and she told her story. But if had not been for sacrifices and taxpayers' money, and donations, and one of the donations, $2,500, came from Park Sterling Bank, and I'm sure that's not all they have done, and so many other people. If it wasn't for people giving and sacrificing and working and volunteering, our life would not be as it is. If it wasn't for people taking chances, we don't know what's going to happen with this administrative building. All we can do is keep trying. We don't know what's going to happen the next five minutes, but we keep trying. Had the privilege of attending the old Fairfield alumni function, and it was awesome, it was great. I took the tour, and those of you that can't, get out and see it, it's a great work. No one in this room outside of it accomplishes anything without the help of somebody else. Nobody achieved or arrived at the point they are today without the help of somebody else. We love to say, I did, I did. And it's one reason why I support what's going on, because doors have been opened for me by so many people. God has blessed me, and my family has helped me, and opened doors for so many people, and made opportunities. So what we do, when we get the chance, and God allows it, we open a door for somebody else. It may not benefit me, but open a door, make an opportunity for somebody else. Everybody needs help. Everybody's going to need somebody. So when you're thinking of doing things, and why we're doing things, and how we're doing things, always keep somebody else in mind. When you talk about volunteers, somebody risked their life to go into a burning building to save somebody else, just to save your property. Somebody risked their life in an accident on the highway to come out to help you. Just think about the thousands of people that give, so our life can be better. The little bit we're doing now, pressing forward, that's all it is, a little bit, and it's our responsibility to make things better for us today, to make things better for the generation after, because that's how we- generation after, because that's how we got here, from those sacrificing and taxpayers' money from the generation before us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Douglas.
I'd just like to apologize to all these people from out of town that got treated like they did at Chamber of Commerce. I don't plan on supporting Chamber of Commerce anymore at all. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, if no one else would like to speak right now, we will go ahead and take a motion to go into executive session. We've got three items for tonight to discuss. Item A is a legal matter. This is an update on litigation against SCENE, S-C-E-N-G, in reference to the abandoned VC Summer New Nuclear Project. Item B is a proposed contractual matter discussion regarding the development of a new county administration building to better serve the citizens of Fairfield County and a contractual matter discussion regarding contractual issues in proposed land conveyance to the county TMS number 134-02-00-008-000. Do we have a motion? Motion has been made and properly seconded going into executive session for the matters as stated. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By a vote of seven to zero, council is now in executive session. Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll, we'll come out of executive session, go back into regular session. I'd like to note, well, no decisions made in executive session. Do we have a motion to do that?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
It's been made and properly seconded that council will come out of executive session, go back into regular session. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By a vote of seven to zero, council is now back in regular session. Just real quickly, before we move on to the next item, I appreciate everybody staying in here with us tonight. I know it's an issue that has a lot of passion on both sides, so just remember that we do have, and this goes for everybody up here's audience as well, me included, we do have rules of decorum, let's make sure that in this business meeting, until it's over, let's abide by those. That said, we are now back to item B under Ordinances, Resolutions, and Orders, third and final reading on ordinance number 707. This is an ordinance authorizing the development of a new county administration building to better serve the citizens of Fairfield County, the execution and delivery of a lease agreement, and associated contracts necessary to affect the intent of the ordinance and other related matters. Do we have a motion?
No move, second it.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to provide third and final reading to ordinance number 707. Is there any discussion? Mr. Pauli.
First off, I want to start off by saying Fairfield County is in possession of 80 or more county-maintained buildings. Adding another one to it would definitely add more cost to the county. My concern is what will become of this administration building? Will we let it sit and become an eyesore for this community? If we don't have the means to do repairs on this building, how will we do repairs on the new administration building when repairs need to be done? Being a council member is a privileged position in one of the most direct ways you can influence decisions that affect the quality of life in your local area. As community leaders, council members have a wide range of responsibilities. Being a council member is certainly not a bed of roses. Their role is time-consuming and can be demanding and complicated. However, you will gain satisfaction from playing an important role in developing a better community for the future. I want to say that I enjoy being a council member. It is a role that I take pride in and give every decision a lot of thought. I abstained on the first two readings because I wanted more information to make my decisions. I've heard citizens say, "He's abstaining for political reasons." Well, please tell me what the political reasons are. I will make a vote tonight that I feel either a lot of thought, a lot of feedback from the community, and the information I receive is in the best interest of all of Fairfield County.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Roof.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I abstained on the first two readings. Also, I didn't have enough information. We had a forum, which I asked for also, and, and that was very beneficial. We didn't get the information. All those questions the administration answered until that night, and, and so this is, it's been a very, very tough decision for me. I thought about it a lot, I've spent a lot of time, I wrote down pros and cons. Today, this morning, I was still very uncertain back and forth, but I spent, I spent time in prayer today, this morning, and numerous times during the day, and I have before. But today, really, really hard, spent a lot of time praying that the Lord would give me the answer that was best for the county, not for me. Is, I pray that take the politics out of my decision. This is what I pray to, to the Lord, to give me peace with a decision that would be best for the county, taking politics out of the equation. Whichever way this goes, there is, there are people on both sides, and I respect both sides and I understand both sides of the different opinions on, on this issue. I just pray that whichever way it goes, that we can all come together and work together and move forward, whether your side is, is, is on the side you want or not, either way, we need to, we need to pull together as a county to move forward together, and I will do that, whichever way it goes. There are some of the, some of the cons that, you know, the monument has been one for me the whole, the whole time through. There are some possible traffic concerns, parking, it's in a neighborhood, and it's heavily divided. And then, you know, on the pro, pro side, I don't, I haven't seen a better solution. This is not, to me, the ideal, but I haven't seen a better solution. We're limited, we can't, we don't have borrowing capacity. Cost, if we put it off, will continue to rise. It would be an economic boost to Windsboro. They expect anticipated cost to wind up at 7.7 million. And I'm looking at the comparison, real comparison square footage cost, current government building, the, help me out, Jason, the Career and Technology Building, which was built five or six years ago, was, I believe, $268 a square foot?
$287.
$287, I'm sorry. Then the new...
Behavioral Health was $268.
Behavioral Health was $268.
The new field house was $287.
The new field house for the, was $287, and so...
Providence is coming in, it's more than $400.
And Providence, which is different, but it's like $390 a square foot. So I just want to say, this is, whichever way this goes, I'm going to support the council and the county, and hopefully that this won't be divisive whichever way it goes and that we can all move forward to make Fairfield County better. And thank y'all for staying through this.
That's all we got. Thank you, Mr. Roof. Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, everybody, for staying tonight. As Mr. Roof said, it's probably been one of the hardest decisions that we all had to decide on, because not only is it my future, it's everyone's future for, we want a better quality of life here. First reading, I voted no, because I listened to they. They told me this, they told me that. So the second reading, I decided to look into it myself. And after looking at the numbers, it's the best feasible thing we have. I took it upon myself to try to convince many of my constituents that this is the best viable option for us, it'll be, definitely be a catalyst for, for the county, and I think it'll be a good thing for us. But needless to say, however this vote goes tonight, we all need to come together and still push forward to make Fairfield better. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Robinson. Anyone else? Yes, Mrs. Goins.
Again, I agree with council team. It is a very difficult situation, but in a sense, to me, it's really not. When I look at the need of Fairfield County, I look at our young people that's coming up and the opportunities and doors that we have to open and afford for them. When I look at our seniors and where they are, and I hear people say, "We don't have anything," but then I hear them say, "We don't want anything," or "We don't want to hear." So for me, it was, in a sense, difficult, but I just looked at it with an open mind. And the reality of it is, in order to move forward, we're going to have to make an effort and we have to have change. You cannot go forward going backwards, so we have to have change. I don't look at, at this building as a Mount Zion school. I did the research on it in depth and went back and did the history on it. I did the history on the Old Fairfield School, all of that, but it's history. And it's part of the past and some of the things in the past that we hold on to and we hold sentimental and we hold dear. But our vision should always be to move forward into the future. And when I look at my life's journey, the things and changes in Fairfield County, again, I have to always think, and I thank God, that it had not been for people making changes. If it had not been for people going against the grain, my life would not have been better, my children's life, many people's life, because of projects like this. This is an opportunity that probably will never come to Fairfield County again. How it's going to come out, we don't know. But by one thing, I can always be sure, when I place it in God's hand, I'm certain that it's going to be all right either way. So whatever the vote is tonight, that's what it's going to be. But my concern is going to always be to move forward. I thank everybody for their concerns, I thank you for your opinion, but forward is just where I'm looking in all things, to better other people's lives, to better our children's life. I don't know if I've ever lived to walk into the building or not, but as long as it benefits somebody else, then I'm good and I've done well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Goins. Anyone else? Mr. Roof.
One more thing I forgot to mention, I mentioned the monument. If this, if this does move forward, I'm still the same as I was. I want to do whatever it takes to, to resolve this monument issue if this goes forward, because I know that is a sensitive issue, it's nationwide, and I'm sensitive to people's feelings, and so if this does go forward, I'm going to do everything in my power to do something to resolve that issue.
That's all. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'd just like to real quickly say, and I know I've talked about it a lot, folks are tired of hearing me talk about it, I understand that, but I just want to say that for everybody who's come out and expressed opinion or concern, whether that be in favor or in opposition to the, the prospect that has been put forward, I just want to say that that's probably the most involvement on both ends of any issue that we've had on this council since I've been here, and it's the most that I've seen. So I appreciate everyone for that. Again, whether I agree with you or disagree with you, I had a conversation with somebody today who, you know, I disagree with, but I think both, both of us appreciate the, the willingness to engage in dialogue, and that's important. And, you know, I won't be here much longer, y'all all know that, but I just want to make sure that folks continue to look at every issue that, that we face in that way. And I hope that you'll also get involved with, you know, all of our municipal governments and what they do, and our, our school district and what they do, just as you are with us now. And, and so again, I just want to express appreciation for that. I genuinely mean, even if we've disagreed, that I appreciate the, the dialogue very much. All right, that said, anyone else? All right, motion has been made and properly seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I counted four ayes. Those in opposition?
Aye.
All right. I think I counted four ayes, two nays, and one abstention. Mr. Trapp?
Can we do a hand count?
Can we do a hand count?
Yes.
All right, those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. By a vote of five to two, the motion is adopted. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No move, Mr. Chair. Second it.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Those in favor adjournment?
Aye.
Aye, we're now adjourned. Thank you.